Let me start. The Patriots to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Well, to roll call, Holly and Brian are both absent, although everyone is here. Any comments from visitors? No? Okay. We'll move on then. Approval of the agenda, any revisions or motions? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second it. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. All right. Old business. We're looking at approving the following policies, second reading. There's a list there. I think any changes would be in accordance with what's recommended by our school board association.
That's correct, yep.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading of the policies, 701, 702, 703, 704, 705, 706, 506, 507?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion on the table to approve all of the policies. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Okay, new business. The consent agenda is attached. I would note that there is someone of the same name as my husband, but it's not my husband, so I do not have a conflict. Just wanted to clarify that.
Another one of them?
Yeah, so A, A, five B, Greg A. Hills. My husband is Greg T. Hills. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, all those in, anyway, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Okay, and just wanted to, I know that every time when we have some resignations, just want to say thank you to the people who have worked in the district and now are leaving.
So we had three resignations this last month. Shreya Pearson is an assistant volleyball coach. And then Larry Kramer has been a long time bus driver and mechanic. And then Tracy Schimer, who's probably eight or 10 years of special education at elementary school. So all resigns, valuable employees. We wish them well.
All right, A, B, discussion items. Discuss and approve the fiscal year '24 revised budget and preliminary fiscal year '25 budget.
So a quick introduction and I'll let Heather take over, take this. We have a process. We have to approve the budget every year in June for the July 1st fiscal year, for the start of the new fiscal year. And Heather's been working on the numbers and putting his budget together. Are you ready to jump in and do your explanation?
So I gave you a little packet with three attachments. And this is kind of the main document with the budget. Has the FY '24 revised and the FY '24 adapted and then the proposed '25. And tonight we'll need approval on the '24 revised and then the '25 proposed budget. And then this document is just kind of the same thing for FY '25, but it's from our system and I just like to attach that as well so that you can see it comes from our finance system. And then this document, we'll just go over this and with some explanations. That's a front and back. And then if you have any questions, let me know. So going over that sheet, our budget assumptions were 2% for the state aid formula increase. That's not really assumption at this point, because we do know that that's what we got. Our ADMs, we are projecting that we're going to be at 948 for '24, '25. So that's what the budget is based on for the gen ed revenue. So for total expenditures, they decreased overall, and this is all funds, by 918,000 or about 5%, but 822,000 of that was the tennis courts because that was paid in '24. And then just to note, salaries and benefits increased about 425,000 or 3%. Revenues decreased about 334,000 or 2%. And this was the last year of the, '24 was the last year of the ESR funds. So the ESR revenue, and we'll talk about that a little further down, but that, you know, is a majority of the decrease. And then we also are seeing an increase in special ed revenue due to the legislation changes that came out of FY '23.
Heather, can I interrupt? Board, we're on the front of page nine. That's what Heather's reviewing right now.
So you're reviewing FY '25 proposed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, Heather, go ahead.
So then we are at, so then we'll just review some of the highlights within each fund. So Fund One, the general fund, the expenditures increased by 363,937. Salaries and benefits increased 359,962. Now, keep in mind that that does include, we had reductions, a couple positions that maybe we didn't replace or positions that we hired at a lower salary amount. So that includes all of those numbers, just you know that. So the overall increase was probably more, but then we had subtractions from that as well. Revenue decreased 640,000. And that's where the ESR cares revenue ended June 30th, 2024. So that's a decrease of 694,415. The gen ed aid increased due to the formula allowance, 100,000. And, you know, we also would have a decrease there because of the decline in students. So, but the offset is that we're a little higher than we were. Food service, the expenditures decreased by 28,000. Revenue decreased by about 20,000. And if you recall, the FY '24 this past year was the first year of the universal free meals, where each student gets a full reimbursement for one breakfast and one lunch. And that's, you know, our numbers aren't, we're kind of still waiting to see how that shakes out just because it's such a huge change of, you know, we're used to having other revenue from the families come in and so, and it always lags behind. So we haven't, I haven't seen the final numbers and how that ended up yet, so. But if you remember, last year we had quite a healthy fund balance in Fund Two. So this is just, we're probably going to be eating some of that up, which is actually good because during COVID, they gave us, they allowed districts to keep a higher fund balance where normally they wouldn't let that happen. They would take the money back if you don't spend it. So I think we're sitting pretty good there, but we're still gonna, I'm still anxious to see how all that shakes out.
I know that there was a pretty big push last summer to still have the application for the educational benefits be completed. Do you recall what percent of families completed those? Or is there still room to grow? What are the plans for this year?
So there's been kind of a change. We still are pushing for families to do that, but they, within the last couple of years, they changed it where anyone who's direct certified through any county program, through SNAP or any of those programs.
Foster care, stuff like that.
Yeah. Then they automatically qualify without the application.
Oh, okay.
But we do still push to have that application because that funds, they use those numbers for like title, title funding and all those others. So we do still need those applications until, until they figure out a solution to that, unfortunately. So we will still be pushing for that application to be completed.
That might be something we could, you know, talk about for the fair group or something too. So just kind of keep that in mind that we're willing to help with those efforts.
Yeah, and we can snow and we can get all that, get some paperwork ready for you guys. So that brings us to Fund Three, transportation. The expenditures decreased by 1,000, revenue increased by about 11,000. We're planning to purchase one bus in FY '25 with capital project levy funds. And that's what we did this past year as well. We did also end up buying a couple of used buses. So the, you'll see later on in Fund Five, that expenditure decreased a little bit in '25 because we're only buying the one new bus. Community services, that doesn't change a whole lot. Expenditures decreased about 20,000 and revenue decreased about 20,000. And that's just due to fluctuating and grants and timing and grants that we see and me trying to keep up with all of that, what Laura's got going on over there. She's got a lot going on, so. And then capital funds, Fund Five, that's where we're seeing some big changes. Expenditures decreased by about 374,000. And that's due to the computer lease is less than it was the prior lease cycle. And I think that's due to the iPads and less laptops and computers type of thing. So that's been nice. The bus purchase, like I mentioned, that story now, textbook. We had a large curriculum purchased for the science curriculum, all science, math and.
Some as well.
Yep. Textbooks and then just some construction and building updates. And then the revenue increased by 421,000. That's due to the capital projects that we're increasing. That increases based on property values, so that fluctuates. The LTFM fire panel, that was something that we, the expenditure came in FY '23 and we're finally getting the, you know, partially '23 and '24. And then we're getting the revenue now in '25. And then the lease levy that we're getting for the tennis courts. And we're also seeing that expenditure side to come through. So that also shows as an increase. The construction funds, the expenditures, obviously, we're done with that project. So that decreased by 822,000. The revenue is decreasing. That's just interest that we earned on those funds sitting there. So we're still in the process of cleaning that up, but that should be cleaned up this year. So the revenue was received in FY '23 and then the expenditures were paid out in '24, so. And then just a few things to note for the future. The CARES Act revenue allocation, we're just through fiscal 2024. So we're seeing that, kind of seeing that spending cliff that we've been talking about in the hearing. Special ed cost subsidy and other legislative changes. There's still, still some things up in the air as to, you know, the state has given the districts more money, but there's also so many restrictions, like, for example, the student support aid, we get 40,000 and, but we can't spend it because there's so many restrictions around it. It's not enough to do a whole lot with. And we've just struggled to find a way to spend it, so. And they're, and they're still talking about ways, expanding the ways in which we can spend that money. So hopefully, we'll find a way to spend it in the future.
And that's a challenge around the state, with our superintendents, where it's almost like you gotta create an $80,000 position to collect a $40,000 aid that they're putting out there, so. So that's something we're working, trying to get. And there's certain requirements, licensures and things that the person has to have in order to get that money. So we're working to try and figure out ways to lighten that up or free that up a little bit more. So it's not just our, our issue, it's kind of a statewide deal.
Yeah, we were even, and I tried to get creative and share a position with another district, but I don't even think that's allowed at this point either, so. And the unemployment costs, I don't know if you all recall, but that was a big change in the FY '23 or 2023 year legislation, allowing a lot of positions that are up in the center to collect unemployment. And that becomes a cost to the district. And the state allocated so much money, just one big pot of one-time money, and that's set to run out after this FY '25. And if they don't find a way to replenish that money, that will become another huge cost for the district, unfortunately.
Heather, do we know what that cost would be to our district?
At this point, so we're seeing, last summer, we didn't see as many because it was so new and people didn't know quite about it. But this year, we're seeing a ton. I think it's going to be at least 50,000 for our district for the summer. And then unfortunately, it also costs the time that it takes for our staff to process that. I mean, it's, it's just becoming a lot of extra for us. So we'll see how all that plays out too. I don't know, Dan, you have any more insight on that?
Heather, you know, for unemployment costs, other than, prior to this, you could levy for those dollar amounts. Right now, we're not allowed to levy for unemployment costs if it comes back to us. So the goal, the hope is that the state either keeps funding it or they at least allow us to levy for those expenses so it doesn't become another capital, or another general fund expenditure for us.
Well, and that's the thing, if you're going to be paying payroll, there's probably work that could be done too, right? So I wonder how long it will be before some of those nine-month contracts turn into 12-month contracts with just reduced hours, right? I mean, there's projects and things that could be done throughout the school, right? And so that's part of it, is unemployment's only kicking in when there's no work or no hours being offered.
Yep. And there's some rules around that too. There are some possibilities. And it's got to be like work or similar work and similar hours and things like that, so, yeah.
It just will be interesting to see.
Yep.
Yep, so then that table or chart at the bottom of that second page, that just goes over our unassigned fund balance. So as you, the very left is the June 23rd. And so those are actual numbers with our general fund at 4 million, just over 4 million. And then with the projected '23, '24 is past year expenditures and revenues. We're seeing a decrease of about 260,000 down to 3,785, which puts us still above the, in the highlighted yellow just below, that shows our fund balance policy at 25%. So it just, we're still at the end of this, in this summer, at the end of June this year, or next, next week, this week, I don't know.
Sunday.
Nice, really. It still puts us in a good place. But then in the '24, '25 upcoming year, this budget is showing a decrease of over 1 million, which puts us well below the 25% fund balance of where our policy has us sitting. So, yeah, that's, that's what I have to share. Does anyone have any questions? Any questions? Shouts of despair, that's an old Augustine line, right?
Thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's a lot of work.
Yeah, Heather has been plugging away for months. Crunchy numbers of putting things together and does an outstanding job with doing that, so. Thank you, Heather.
So we, do we need to do a motion then to approve the fiscal year '24 revised budget and the preliminary fiscal year '25 budget?
Yep.
I'm assuming we need them to be separate.
I think it can be done all at once. You have all been done at once. Up to you if you want to do it separate, that's why.
Why don't we do them separate, just so we have separate motions? And so let's have a motion, since he asked for a motion for the fiscal year '24 revised budget.
So I'll move that we approve the revised 2024 budget.
Motion by Don, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Roland, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Okay, is there a motion for the preliminary fiscal year '25 budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the '25 proposed budget.
Motion by Jen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Don, any discussion?
I just have, I don't know if it's discussion, but I think a comment. When we're, when we look at the proposed budget, that is a significant amount of money that the district is looking at. And I know it's just a proposed budget and I know it could possibly be revised. And we don't know what the legislature will do next session. But this is concerning. It's very concerning about what, where do, where do we begin to make cuts in, in the district to be able to accommodate what is going to be required? And, you know, we used to have a saying years ago that, you know, you can cut the meat off the bones, but sooner or later you get to the bone. And, and I have concerns that we might be getting to that point.
Yeah, I think those concerns are real. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Next is to discuss and approve the write-in vote counting.
Yep, just the resolution changes how we count write-in ballots. If the write-in ballot name or person doesn't have as many votes as the least number of votes of somebody on the ballot, those numbers don't have to be officially reported or counted. And what that does is, I don't know if it's always that way, but there's always a few, I don't know, Mickey Mouse write-in or things like that have to be counted and reported. We don't, won't have to do that in the future, so. But it's just a matter of, to approve the new allowance, I guess, for counting write-in ballots. Heather, anything to add on that? And are we doing more work on that?
No, I think that's good.
Yep.
And so that's consistent with, like, what the state auditor's office would, their policy and what they would recommend?
Yeah, they're recommending this.
And MSBA as well.
Is there a motion to approve the write-in vote counting process?
Yeah.
Is that what I would count the process? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the process.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Approve the resolution of establishing dates for writing of affidavits of candidacy.
All right, so that's with the fall election coming up and the school board position's up for vote. So it's approving the resolution as to when, I should pull that up, as to when dates are, July 30th to August 13th. If people want to file for school board, those are the dates for that, so.
July 30th to August 13th.
Yep. So we need a motion and an approval of that.
I'll, I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Roland, second by Don, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes.
All right, the EDM authorization, that's, this will allow me or give me the authorization to approve all our other staff to have access to MDE as needed in order to complete their various reports or work, various work with the Department of Education. This, every year, it's a yearly deal. You have to get it approved by the board every year to allow me to continue to be that person.
The representative of the behalf of the district, okay.
I'll move to accept it.
To have Dan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, second. Motion to have Mr. Stifter be that person named. Second by Jen, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Okay, next, property liability out of workers' compensation insurance recommendations for 2024, '25.
Yep, so this year with our insurance quote, we went out, we had two quotes. One was Security State Agency, who had better insurance agent, carrier. And then we had Weisenegger Angle Insurance out of Baxter provide a quote. And through the process, we ended up with a better quote through Weisenegger, Angle and Insurance. Our rep, our Jamie's here, if you have any questions. As we compared across coverage, coverage is provided either equal to or in some cases a little better. And the premium came in overall roughly about $50,000 less with them. So we're recommending to the board that we make the change. And if the board asks questions, I would ask the allow Jamie to answer them.
And can you refresh our memory again on what the overall amount is? It's a pretty substantial amount.
Yeah, the difference in premiums between the two is $49,247.24.
And what's the usual total spend?
Well, the year quote will be 163,771 with Weisenegger, Angle and Wright Insurance.
Okay, so then with close to a $50,000 savings, it's probably 28% roughly? Is that close?
Yep.
Who's Wright?
Wright Insurance is, they're a specialty company that handles a lot of school districts.
Who's the closest district?
That we would insure with Wright.
Oh, yeah. Do you have any business with Wright?
Yeah, so I work with, let's see here, trying to think of. So I have the Charter School over in Pillager with Wright Insurance. We also have Discovery Woods over in Brainerd with Wright Insurance. Would be two of our closest ones.
Do they specialize in this area more so than?
EMC?
Yeah, or is that kind of where their sweet spot is?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, definitely. So I have a, a rep that I work with through our agency, he's located in Ohio, but he comes up once a year, sits down with us and talks about their new products, what they're looking for, and then, you know, what the competition's doing. EMC would be Wright's biggest competitor in the school district area, for sure. But.
If I'm correct, they, they elected to not bid, correct?
Yep.
Was there any reason? These just.
Claims, I guess, and wouldn't starve concerns.
Starve concerns and auto was a big concern for them too, because we've had a couple large claims over the last years. So they were claiming that we were a loss. In the auto, more specifically. And they were just out two weeks ago to look, take a look at our roofs and do an inspection for future business. At that point, we were already done with this process. So, but they, since they were there, they went ahead with it for future business, potentially.
Did you ask anybody, when we put out the proposal, the bid, was there no other responses from anybody else, any other agencies or?
We just went out to these two. For school districts, there's really not very many companies that, that bid it. The other quote we got was actually with Liberty Mutual, and they don't, they don't specialize in schools. And I could tell as I was reviewing, would you agree with that?
Yeah, we have, we work with Liberty too.
As I was reviewing the policies, it was hard to even, they didn't even have like the specific, you know, E and O for administration or board comparable to what most insurance carriers that cover schools would have. So we're, we're a little limited as far as who would cover what. And that's, I mean, not so much with the auto and the work comp, though, as we could have went with other companies.
We work with Hanover as well, Hanover insures school districts. And I, they were waiting for the Wright's price to come in before they were, he didn't start working on it. Once I gave them Wright's price, they're like, no, no chance we can even come close. And.
You gave them Wright's price?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to either save them time or get the best price for you guys, right? So we'll, we'll leverage other companies against each other to try and get the best premium for you guys.
So is the coverage comparable to what we have had?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would say it's better.
I would say it's better too, it's not very comparable to what our other offer was. It just wasn't, I mean, the, and it was more expensive, it just wasn't the same coverage.
The deductibles, I think, were higher, right?
Right.
So in essence, you're saying that our prior broker was only able to get Liberty Mutual to bid it, not our prior carrier, right?
Right.
And so then based on that, that's how we.
Yeah, put him in there. Put him in there. Tell Spot.
The, the insurance market, especially in the school district area, is, is tough because there's just not a lot of companies. Supply and demand, right? There's not a ton of supply, and there's a lot of demand, so.
You're kind of over a barrel.
See, I mean, sometimes, right? So we have, we have three companies we work with that would be willing to insure school districts. Liberty being one of them, Hanover's the other one, and then Wright. And when I first started, almost ten years ago, we had much more. I mean, we had five or six, and they're, they're dropping out like flies. But Wright is very strong in the school district industry, so I, I have zero worries about them ever dropping out of that appetite. Because that's basically, that's, that's where.
They've got the market share now.
They, they hang a hat on it, so.
Do you have any other districts?
Yeah, I work with eight different public entities, our, our insurance agency, we work with nine total school districts in the area. I work with eight public entities, that includes cities too, but, yeah, I have four, I think, four or five other school districts I work with.
So our, some of our, so when you say it was better in terms of risk, what, what was better besides deductibles on there?
I did bring exactly what I pointed out to, to Heather and Mr. Stifter, but there was, there was multiple things I read in, in that policy that kind of concerned me. And one of them was, your guys' work comp policy wasn't under your umbrella, which is a really simple thing. And if something were to happen, you wouldn't have any umbrella coverage on top of that or top of your five hundred thousand of liability. I was concerned with that. The first name insured was incorrect on your guys' policy. And as I related these, these two, I'm not saying that it would have been a problem because there might have been an endorsement in there that broadened the first name insured, but to me, that's a really simple thing to get correct right away. So I was concerned about that. There was a couple other things I pointed out. I, I was looking at your guys' building coverage, so we, we blanket personal property and we blanket the buildings. And we come up with a total number, and our total number was eighty-three million something. That's all of the property the school district insures as far as buildings and personal property. I did a valuation on all of the buildings, and my valuation was low. And I'm not, not saying it was correct, but it was like significantly lower than what you guys have us insured for. I think we should take another look at what you guys are insuring, all of your buildings and personal property. And there might be some savings in there even more. We might be overinsured, I don't know. But it's worth taking a second look at, because when was the last time it was taken a second look at?
So you said it was low?
My, my valuation can't weigh low, but I.
We were overinsured.
I, I think that my valuation was low. And it makes a lot of assumptions. It's just a computer system, you type in elementary school, pops in the numbers, here's the square footage. It makes a lot of assumptions, and we can fine tune that, it's going to take some time. But it, it's something that I think we should look at because the cost of property insurance is pretty high right now. And that's, that's your biggest line of coverage on your policy is your property insurance, so. And then I also put an offer in for doing a hundred thousand dollar wind and hail deductible. I don't know what you guys ultimately decided, it wasn't enough savings where I would feel safe with you guys wanting to do it. It was like a four thousand dollar savings. And then you're taking on a lot of risk for four thousand dollars a year. So that's not something I would, I would recommend you guys do, but that's totally up to you. So we looked at a couple different things we could do to try to save some extra money in there. Insurance rates are, you've probably seen it on your home and auto. It's crazy out there, so we're looking for ways to, to change some things and, and try to ease the pain for some insurance. The, the best thing I can do for you guys is Wright Insurance has a lot of, a lot of resources for safety. We were looking at your guys' last history on your work comp, there was twenty-two slips, trips, and falls in the five years we looked at. Not all of them paid, a lot of them were just something that had been reported, they felt better the next day. But soft tissue injuries are what really drive work comp rates. And I, when I was speaking with these two, I, I would be more than willing to come over and, and do safety meetings and, and try to reduce some of that risk you guys have. Not reduce the risk, the risk is there. Try to make it less of a risk. Or why is, you know, just bring it to the surface that this is happening, here's how insurance rates work. We're trying to save money everywhere we can, and insurance is a big cost to the district. And just have that conversation with some folks, and, and maybe there's something we can change to reduce some of those slips, trips, and falls. But this, this insurance market's really made us think outside the box on some of these issues, and what we can do. And like I said, the hundred thousand dollar wind, wind and hail deductible, one of the things that, you know, taking on more risk, right? Taking on a bigger deductible is a way to reduce some premium, but it just wasn't enough in this case, but.
So I don't know if you looked at the information Gaffney sent, but there was a few, so these are a, a couple of the comparisons that I had on the property deductibles with Wright, we were going to have a ten thousand dollar deductible, and with Liberty Mutual, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. General liability with Wright, no deductible, and with Liberty, it was a thousand dollar deductible. On the educators' legal liability, our retroactive date with Wright, they were going to match what EMC had, which was seven-one-two-thousand-three. And with Liberty, it was going to be current, so seven-one-two-zero-twenty-four, and that can be a big deal. Hopefully, we'll never have to worry about it, but it can be a big deal. Auto deductibles with Wright, it was a thousand dollars, and then with Liberty Mutual, it was twenty-five hundred. So those are just some of the quick comparisons, and then with the property and the hail and wind, basically, there was no deductible with Liberty, it was a minimum of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And, I mean, that's just astronomical.
That's catastrophic.
For a smaller district, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, basically, they have no, no coverage, unless everything's going to.
Was blown away, yeah.
Those are just some of the highlights that I had noted as I was going through them.
So none of our, our limits changed? And up, up there for what we had for coverages?
I quoted what we had. The, what, what I quoted is, so the way Wright Insurance works too is, so, like I said, we blanket everything. And our total value was eighty-three million or eighty-four million or something. My value was just a hair higher than what you guys have currently, well, it was within a few hundred dollars. Your co-insurance on the EMC policy is a hundred percent, which makes you insure everything to a hundred percent. Our co-insurance with Wright Insurance is ninety percent. So we took the eighty-four million dollars and went ninety percent, and it came in at like seventy-three million, or I don't remember what it was, but. So it allows us to insure that blanket for only ninety percent, which can save, because chances are, you're not going to lose everything all at once. If there is, we're willing to take that ten percent risk on the value. So we're able to, our, our limit is going to show, I think it's seventy-four million or seventy-five million, it is ninety percent of what you guys currently were insured with.
Which if we're overinsured, it's still probably.
Well, and we can, yeah, and we can look at that, and we can fight with the insurance company, we can do that midterm. I mean, or a month in or whatever, we can make that change. The other, the other thing with EMC with a hundred percent co-insurance, if, if you guys came in and you're underinsured on something, they could actually reduce your claim by the amount that you're underinsured. So say that you only were insured to ninety percent of your value, they would only pay ninety percent of your claim. So the ninety percent at least gives us a ten percent window of being in the clear on that co-insurance penalty as well, so. But I think, I think looking at the values of the buildings and property would, would be worth the time. And then we know, one way or another, if we're insured to value or not, if it hasn't been looked at in a while.
I don't recall. It has, because EMC actually thought that it wasn't quite what it should be either, so they had been out and taken measurements and done it again, but I feel like each, each company has their own idea of what it should be. I don't know.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense, but that's what I feel like with my experience.
Yeah, but three years ago, they were out and did measurements and checked out.
Yeah, that sounds right.
And made some adjustments.
So three years ago is pretty, you know, relatively soon, but lots changed in three years as well, so. Everything inflated out off of COVID, cost of construction went up to three hundred bucks a square foot, and it's leveled off and actually come back a little bit. I don't know, it might just be worth a second look.
And, you know, just for my, whatever two cents is worth, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're publicly putting these requests out so we have ample companies looking at it, whether it's broker, you know, brokers and everything. That just, you know, these, I just want to definitely see that happen. I do look at, you know, we also have health insurance and whatnot, because that's a, that can be, that, there's a lot of things that can be looked at through that portion of our rest also.
Yeah, I did contact MSBA, and they said that, no, it's because brokers are very limited as far as the insurance companies. So the better way to do it is to, to interview your broker, brokers, if you want to make a change, and change the broker, and and it's their job to go out and bid the insurance, it's not our responsibility to, because we're not, we're not experts.
We're not self-insured, we're.
Yeah, we're not experts in that area, and for us to try to do that, it's not, it's, it's just not efficient and.
I, I will tell you that with, with me having Wright Insurance, access to Wright Insurance, and Hanover Insurance, and then you guys had EMC, those are the three big players, so I don't really know who else would have been able to come in with anything else other than like a Liberty, which was fifty thousand higher.
Yeah.
So sometimes, sometimes you get too many people at the table, and then it just turns into a fight. Just because the, the school district insurance market, there just isn't a lot of competition as far as companies are.
And then also, you know, it, it's moving it out, you know, we are, you know, we're Aiken, Aiken School District, and moving it out of the city, the community of Aiken from the broker is another thing that I feel is critical and is important, always. And is our local support and our local people doing our business too. And I know you're Brainerd, right?
Yeah, and I have a ton of clients over in Aiken, I'm shopping at a grocery store, I'm buying gas over here. I'm over here a couple times a week, so I, but I am not paying taxes in your district, and I understand that.
Oh, we have property for sale, go ahead.
Roland will help you out. Roland's wife will help you out.
Oh, go to somebody else.
Go to somebody else. Wright, is there a motion?
So moved.
And, and what's the motion to go with the recommendation?
To go with the recommendations.
Okay. There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries with all members voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Heather.
Okay, administrative reports, any board member reports?
Thank you.
Okay, any committee reports?
I can jump in with policy committee. The one, the one policy that came back, the board wanted us to look at, I think I got the questions that were asked that do with homeschooling and participating in activities. High School League has a rule that if there's more than five, five or more, I remember it's more than five or five or more students that are part of one homeschool group, then, then they have to have an agreement with the district in order to participate in High School League activities. That's at Minnesota State High School League level, so it'd be the varsity JDC squad level. These, I think that was, the question was, what, where's the number, and that's the only thing really in the policy that addresses homeschool charters or homeschool. I think so, if, if our homeschool would have five or more high school age kids who are going to participate, and you want to participate in a High School League activity, then we'd have to have an agreement in order for them to do so, or we'd be in violation of the High School League rules, so. I think that was the one, I think that was the question that would came up. I think that was the one, I think that was a question that we came up with, with that, how does that work, so.
That makes sense, because otherwise, people could be doing funky arrangements, trying to get their athletes on different teams, right?
Yeah, it's one of those.
So, so the homeschool, if the homeschool has more than five high school age students that want to participate-
Yeah, more than five high school age students, I believe.
High school age, it doesn't, so, they could have 30 elementary age, and it's not going to affect them.
Right, that's my understanding.
And it isn't just five for football or five, it's just five total.
Five students in the, in the, in the cooperative that are of that, of the High School League, you know, nine through 12. Then we'd have to have an agreement if any of them wanted to play on any of our High School League sports or activities, I guess, wouldn't just be sports. Otherwise, it's just policy updates as were recommended by MSBA on the rest of them.
Okay, so the first reading of-
Yep.
Seven 12, seven 10, seven 11. Okay, so we don't need any motions there.
Mr. Dawkins on his way to a conference in the cities. He should be there by now. Let's see, depending on what Storm did. And Mr. Mars is on vacation. She did share with the board, I think she shared with the board a, or a update on what's, kind of a wrap up. Graduation went well. We dodged raindrops. End of the school year went well, number of different activities at the end of the year. Everything goes a strong finish. Like our graduating senior class, it's, you know, we, we tell the seniors every year in the fall that, you know, our year is going to depend on how well our seniors and how our seniors get involved and participate. And we had a pretty good, a very good senior class this year. And that makes, kind of helps. Makes, makes the whole high school and maybe even district, just helps everything out if you have a positive senior group leading the way. And I think we did this year. So, it was a good, good wrap up to the school year.
And grad class was fantastic. I think that they raised the most that they ever have. It was just so, so generous, and there were lots and lots of volunteers. And I think Mr. Wohlshneider commented that was the most parents he saw still at 4:00 AM helping the custodial staff clean up the building in his 10 years. So, and I was one of them. So, we, we stayed till the very end, and it was just a great turnout. Graduation was lovely, and speakers were fantastic, and yeah.
Yeah. Steve mentioned all went well. The grad class, not only parents, but kids were helpful and did a nice job of-
Yeah.
Picking up after themselves, so.
Yeah, they just, yeah, it was really nice.
Which is good, because I think there's some big borrowing and stealing to get custodians to stay. And I think you might have, Wohlshneider might be locked in for a few years.
Okay, good. All right, community education, Ms. Parkin?
Didn't, so didn't have a lot of update.
Okay. All right, superintendents report?
All right, just run through it quick. Our enrollment from April and, and May was down four students. I, one, I think we had one family move away, and there was this couple of kids in high school that we moved in the online or to the old school program. Three or four, it seems like, every year from that April to May, kind of a wrap up. Listening session, we're going to have one more listening session tomorrow night, 6 o'clock. Be at the media center at the high school, also be virtual. I put the link out there. I'd encourage board members or anybody here, encourage people to either show up or to log in. We've been getting pretty good response. The last inverse one we had, we, we didn't get a very good response. We had one person show up for the first, first round, and then nobody showed up in the evening. But the group, Lynn and Glenn from ICS wanted to get one more shot. They're, tomorrow they're going to finish up their building study. They're finishing up the ripple site. They're going to come and do that during the day. And while longs are here, we're going to try to run another session, so. Get down to the end, but if you know of anybody, or if you can encourage anybody, let's see if we can get them to show up or be a part of that. So, we had good feedback, collecting lots of information. Or they are at this point. And kind of follow up with that. They'd like to present to the board in July. One of the thoughts they had was, we have a board meeting on the 17th.
I think it's the 15th.
Oh.
Is it?
It is the 15th.
It is 15th. I'm sorry, I put the wrong date in my, I'm using, I'm even telling you the wrong date. So, on the 15th, if we could meet at, oh yeah, it was on June. If we could meet at 4:30 prior to the board meeting and the work session, have them present. And then we could roll right into the, the board meeting at 6:30, if that works. I know 4:30 is getting earlier for those coming from work. If that works out, great. If we want to look for a different night, I can try to set that up with them as well, so.
I'm out of town.
Okay. Well, I think it's important to try and get everybody there.
And I don't think I can-
I, so maybe I look at a different date, I guess what I'm saying. Not trying to guilt you.
No, no, I, I don't think I can remote it, otherwise I would, but I just don't think I can.
I have three trials that day, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Do you, should I connect with Lynn and Glenn and see what dates work that they have available to come down? And then maybe try to schedule that way?
Yeah, I think that would be fine, because I think-
Send out some type of a cool survey or something.
Yeah, Brian, yeah, Brian and Tom.
Yeah.
Check their calendars too.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if we could all be there. Okay?
Yeah.
And then a couple, I don't know what I've got in my order here. Fairbooth, we got that coming up. Hopefully, somebody's got some creative ideas.
Do we have that reserved?
Got it all reserved, all set. We're on Kirk's, Kirk's list. I sent in another form today. So, we're reserved. We'll have the same space or same amount of space we've had in the past. I think, I don't know who got involved, but you brought Roland. I think you were, did you bring Connor or that?
Yeah, I think it's, I think I still have that. You have the stand-up Connor? Yeah.
So, I don't know what we want to do, or if somebody wants to be the creative guru behind us.
Well, to talk to Holly, I think she has some of those banners that we used last year.
Somebody want to head that up or meet with her, or do you want to have a couple of board members meet to plan it out? Do you want to do it? I don't know how he did it last year. Last year, he showed up and he just kind of had everything.
We had survey stuff last year, didn't we?
That day before.
Couldn't have survey stuff last year?
We did last year as far as the-
For the strategic-
Well, we have, we have the free and reduced meals.
Is there any help that ICS can provide for people that weren't a part of the listening session that you could have had?
They talked about, yeah, they, it's like a random, not a random question, but a, a question of the week, question of the, you know, that they, that we put out and get feedback on. They can look at, maybe we can get a couple of those set up.
Perhaps, perhaps it would be good to have the strategic plan there. And there's some pretty awesome wall-mounted stuff at the school already, but maybe something like that would be nice to have.
Okay.
Depending on how the roof is set up.
Right. I get a, get a couple of those made. If you think of anything else, let me know. Or if you have something, well, me, bring it, because-
Does this spreadsheet we can type on and it goes in?
I think so, with the sign up. That's one you're, should be able to type right in there.
Really?
Yeah, I think I signed up.
Yep. Roland, you're just there.
Well, I don't know. I was looking at it.
Every place that's blank, put your name, Roland.
I think, I think last year you told me you're just there. I don't know.
Hey, I'm not throwing the race this year, but that's one thing I don't have to worry about.
While you're looking at that, we did apply to the city for the SRO grant. We, we should know later this summer, early fall, if we qualify for the grant, the city thinks they have a plan to help us find somebody that would, would do that if we get the grant. City also applied, we worked, we applied to the city for funds to update the crosswalk signage on both 169 and 210. We did get that grant. We received that grant. Amy told me today, and they're just waiting for the next steps as to when, when they'll be installed, when they'll be updated, so. So, that's good. I know if you, the, the crosswalk signage is almost invisible. So, we're hoping to get some updated and, and modernize that, so. Amy's done a nice job both with that. She has same success with helping us get the SRO grant as well. But she done, Amy Dotser has done a nice job working on those, so. And then looking at the budget, you know, we got that information tonight, and Dawn kind of capped it off. But, you know, we had some tough decisions coming ahead in the upcoming year, and we kind of knew this was coming, but here it is. So, a lot of our work cut out for us, and we're looking at, you know, where do we, where can we save, save some money or ways to generate more, so.
Seems to me we got a good start tonight with the 50, $50,000 reduction in the cost of our insurance. That's a little bit of a help.
Yeah.
Kind of a drop in the bucket.
We'll take all the drops we can get at this point, I guess, so. That's, I believe, that's what I have.
All right, anything else from anyone? Your motion for adjournment? So moved. Is there a second? Would you, second, by Jen? All those in favor, so you can always say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you need a adjournment?
Thank you.
This is the shortest committee we've ever had.